Good morning. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for October 10th, 2023. If you can, please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God and in Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
I got a motion of the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed is the same. Passes.
Move to recess.
Second.
Got a motion of the second recess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed is the same. We are recessed. We're going to start our EDA meeting. Just want to introduce yourself and go ahead.
Sure.
Oh, should we start, start the meeting and get the agenda review first? I am sorry.
I'll move the agenda.
Got a motion of the second for the agenda review for our EDA meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed is the same. Passes. And minutes for September 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed is the same. Passes. Now, go ahead Nancy.
I'm Nancy Bofelman, Associate Director for the City of Mankato and the Blue Earth County EDAs. And I'm here today to share with you the new payment standards that we're recommending for you to adopt. And every year HUD does issue, HUD is U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, they do issue fair market rents for every jurisdiction, jurisdiction across the country. And each of us in our own communities can set our standards, our payment standards based on those fair market rents. And we have the ability to set them between 90 and 110% of those standards. Due to the tight housing market, we do try to stay as close to that 110 as we can. We, we don't want to get all the way up to the 110 just because if next year if they decide to lower them, we don't want to have to drop our standards and that would really impact families. So you'll see that with our standards that we provided, we have a range between 102% to 107%. And how we make those determinations, we have different factors that we do look at. So we look at funding availability and that's funding through HUD. And right now they're able to fund us voucher for voucher. So that really hasn't been an issue. Our biggest area that we are concerned on is rent burdeness of participants. And so when we look at our households and those that have seen increases over the past years, and if they're paying more than that 30%, then we look at how we can raise those payment standards to better serve their needs. And so we do, we did make adjustments based on that. The other thing we do look at is quality of units and we do our annual inspections for those units. And we do compare the units that we assist with unassisted units to make sure that we're providing quality units to renters in our community. The next consideration that we do look at is changes in rent from owners. And there is a typo here. It says 3%. Usually it is about a 3% we see every year, but this year we really have seen an average of probably more closer to 5%. And that would be landlords that do raise their rents on an annual basis. Some landlords are real sporadic. And there we were seeing some that went up to as much as like 10%. And it's not that they weren't reasonable. All those amounts are reasonable. And when we did talk to landlords, they really did stress utilities are going up, supply costs are going up, cost mortar for services that they provide on the facilities as far as lawn care and snow removal, things like that. And then assessed values for rental properties are going up. So we do have an understanding that there, those are real numbers that landlords are trying to meet with as well. So we did take that into consideration. And then we look at unit availability. And right now we still are seeing one bedroom units are very hard to find in our community. And that's why even with our supportive housing project, we're looking at efficiencies in one bedrooms to try to fill that gap. And then lease up time. We like to see people find housing within the 60, 60 days, but it has been taking 20 or two to four months for families to find it. So we know that there is, it takes some time for families to find units as well. So we are presenting these standards to you with increases from 102 to 105, to 107%. And would ask you to approve those standards.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion of the second. Any discussion?
Pretty much. A lot of bit of work though.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed is the same. That passes.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed is the same. We are adjourned. We will start back with our Blue Earth County Board meeting. And we have the Blue Earth County Sheriff's to discuss our contract for services for the city of Eagle Lake.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning. Come on up.
Please.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
So as you have probably heard, we've been working with the city of Eagle Lake to formalize a agreement to take over their law enforcement services. This would involve in hiring three additional employees, a supervisor and two deputies would be assigned to the city of Eagle Lake to cover 6,240 hours of patrol coverage. And then the sheriff's office would take over the rest of the, of the services. The numbers were provided to you. Chief Deputy Brennan came up with the numbers breakdown, numbers that everyone is happy with. The city of Eagle Lake, city council approved to enter into the contract last week. The contract has been reviewed by their attorney and the county attorney. And city administrator Roman is here with us if we have any questions for him.
I don't have any questions. I will move approval of the contract.
Second.
Got a motion of the second. Any discussion?
I don't have any questions, but I just would like to say thank you to the sheriff's department, Jennifer and the city. I see the mayor and a council member here today too. Appreciate all the work to get this deal put together. I know this was a very difficult contract to put together. And if this would have happened five years ago, it would have been a different outcome. So things are changing. I think the citizens of Eagle Lake and I think the citizens of Blue Earth County are starting to realize that we got to start thinking outside the box and how we deal with this stuff. Cause if you were to, well, they talked about this several years ago and the diff, the outcome was much different. So the sheriff's department is going to do a great job for the community and have very good protection and very confident that it's going to work out really well.
I'm, you know, being a former police officer and I see this happening and I see more and more things like this happening across the state and across the nation actually because of the, the issues with payment, because the issues with not being able to get police officers, I can see this as the best of both worlds that we can, we can come up with. Nothing's cheap and we, I think we all understand that. But we have to protect our neighborhoods. We have to protect the people in our, our cities and our county. We're just isn't, you know, we want to make sure the city of Eagle Lake gets well taken care of, is part of Blue Earth County and we want to make sure they're safe. And I know under the direction of the sheriff that it will be taken care of. Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed is the same. Passes. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the, yeah, on behalf of the city of Eagle Lake, I just want to thank you and thank Sheriff Fersell and Chief Deputy Brennan and everybody else that's been involved. We greatly appreciate it. Just been great partners to work with and thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And now we have Public Works, Mr. Tilges.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Ryan.
Regarding your text, I don't know what those are. Based on where they're at.
Came up with the township officials meeting.
They don't look like cameras, so. All right. Relatively short agenda today with some information items at the end. So we'll start at the beginning with the consideration of MinDOT's offer to, of compensation and related documents for property interest to be acquired for the trunk highway 22 project from Mankato to St. Peter. Included in your packet is a cover letter from WSB and Associates who are working for the Minnesota Department of Transportation acquiring right of way necessary for the reconstruction of Minnesota Highway 22, again from Mankato to St. Peter. Blue Earth County owns the Casota pit as detailed on the second page of the packet materials. The outlined in blue is the Blue Earth County pit where we utilize that space to stockpile millings and other construction aggregates, things of that nature. MinDOT needs a little bit of additional easement for the property of 15 foot easement along the west perimeter as kind of detailed on the third page is highlighted in the yellow parcel. 15 feet along the east edge of that property. And then in addition, as we do with our practice, conversion of the underlying road easement to fee title right of way. So that's included in the offer as well. Total offer, the appraiser's value for acquisition is $15,000 for said right of way. And then included in the packet is a warrant ED for the actual sale of the property that would require signature by county officers, including the county board chair and county administrator, as well as an over-ization. And then last but not least is the offer to sell memorandum of conditions that would also have to be executed by the county board chair and administrator. This is something I would recommend the county board approval and execution.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of the second. Any discussion?
Be clear.
Seems pretty straightforward.
It's, yes. Jack, I know Jack looked it over and went through it, read, read everything through and reviewed it. I looked over it. It's consistent with documents that we develop when we acquire right of way. So no concerns on our part.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed is the same. That passes.
Okay. We're going to hand physical copies because it requires no authorization. All right. Few action items and from, I'm sorry, informational items for the board. So please jump in with questions as we go. CASA 26, project update from 57 to Minnesota Highway 22. Minnesota paving materials should have the curb and gutter installed from 57 to Country Club Drive by Thursday. The, they should have the storm sewer pipe, all of the storm sewer pipe main line installed by the middle of next week. So that's a good sign as you know, we know we're late in the season. They're wrapping up the storm sewer main line. They'll still have some tile work and things like that to do to connect catch basins and intakes, et cetera. The road has two lifts of Batumas paved from CASA 57 Fairway Drive. So kind of the west half of the road is paved and the base crew is working on preparing the gravel, the base for the trail from Fairway to Mary Lane. The contractor has not provided an updated schedule for completion. Our estimation is it's likely going to be mid to late November. So we are assessing or we will be assessing liquidated damages of $2,000 per calendar day effective October 1st onto the contractor for, they've really provided us without a strong explanation of why they're this far behind, nor have they really provided us with their intended measure to correct, obviously being this far behind. They're, they're continuing to plug away out there, but unfortunately obviously it's much slower pace than we had anticipated. So we will be monetarily penalizing them and then when it's all said and done, we'll be working through if they have valid reasoning why they think something could be backed to them. We, we deal with that on a frequent basis unfortunately, so. CASA 10 and 72 in Vernon Center, contractors working on the one block of CASA 72 that's East Street, reconstructing that this year as part of the city's overall utility project. There will be no work on CASA 10 this year, maybe with the exception of just working in the south intersection at East Street where it intersects with 10. As we know, 10 and the Main Street portion of 72 will be next year. CASA 13, again from 169 to CASA 1, the road was closed on October 2nd. The box culvert crossing at the county ditch was started today. The new culvert will be installed later this week. The contractor will have 10 days from closing that to get the box culvert and the road put back in to reopen it to the local residential traffic that live out there on CASA 13. Tree clearing is also underway along the entirety of the project. Mathews is stripping tops and preparing for grading areas west of the bridge. And additional earthwork will start next week as the crops continue to come out with an emphasis on regrading, the curb regrades to the bridge area. And then the bridge removal will, is scheduled to take place in mid to late November. So we do realize that is an impact to the residents out there. However, given all of the variables that we're working against with respect to the Army Corps of Engineers permit, as well as the seasonal restrictions on working in the stream and trying to get this reopened by next year. We are continuing forward with trying to get a lot of the bridge work done in the winter to get those tears and bubbles out of the, out of the river before the river level rise up on the water. Our county stated highway 11 project that we've been designing, plans are at 90% ready for submittal to state aid. We just hold on to those until Jack has had a chance to meet with all of the landowners and take into account if they've got any concerns, if we need to make minor revisions with respect to field approach locations or minor drainage changes, et cetera, before we submit those. And Jack is continuing to meet with the landowners. Right of way acquisition is, is moving forward. So we should be on track with that project for bidding this, this spring and construction next year. Victory Drive, county stated highway 82 from south of Hoffman Road to Fair Street. The 60% plans were received again for both segments. As the board may recall, we are breaking that out into two subparts from south of Hoffman to south of Maine and then from south of Maine to Fair Street because of the impact that it has to the, the region and the, the city. Cutting off Hoffman and Maine under the same project was problematic, especially with some of the work the city of Mankato has going on around town with Riverfront Drive on plan next year as well. So trying to make sure that we can kind of still have some of that east-west connectivity across Victory. There is a public open house meeting scheduled for October 24th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM that we will have, we have already met with the owner of the, the gas station and the strip mall. He's Happy Dan's and heard his concerns and then we'll be seeking to meet with other businesses. So if they don't make it to the open house meeting, we'll be reaching out to them to ensure we can work through access issues, things of that nature. Staff will be covering that meeting. I'll be traveling for other meetings, but I think from the 24th again from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We've got some maintenance activities. It's, it's really as business as usual. Striping contract work is completed for the year. Mowing in the middle third of the county has been completed. They're going to finish up the season with some additional shoulder and back cuts around the county. Crews are wrapping up fall pavement patching and shouldering work and then the brave park playground equipment. Work is nearly complete. They're waiting on mulch delivery and still need to install the turf establishment. That's, that'll be a stop on our county board road tour that we were scheduling for November. Rapid and damn, I did not include a memorandum with an update because there really is no update. Bar engineering reached out to the firm to inquire about the status of licensure surrender and they just told us there's no update. So we're, we're sitting in, sitting in the limbo. Yeah, absolutely. So frustrating. That was a, one of the items when Vance and I were out at the Transportation Alliance flying in Washington DC, we did bring up with our, our delegations and I actually just hand wrote a handful of notes and put them in the mail this morning to the folks that we met with, to thank them for their time and then to ask for follow-up on these items that we talked about. So maybe we can get a little traction if, if our US representatives and senators give it a little push. Long range transportation plan is also something that we've been working on behind the scenes. SRF has been making progress on the plan, including submittal of the draft report and we've provided comments back. So that's moving along nicely. We've received updated jurisdictional change recommendations for our comments. I found it interesting, the sub consultant TC2, who Mark would know Craig Vaughn, who was formerly with SRF, very good planner, likes to use what he calls an arms length review of the county and looking for route continuity and, and do routes make sense? And would there make sense to maybe provide balance within townships if there's township roads that would make more sense as county roads for connectivity and system, overall system efficiency? And then the same for county roads that could go back to townships. So one of the things that we, we talked about that was try to find a somewhat balance. There's got to be give and take. We can't give miles back to townships, nor can we afford to take a bunch of miles. So trying to find that. So I mean, you're here to see their next iteration of it. It was a productive discussion, I think. And then in addition to that, we'll be meeting with SRF later this week to review a proposed projects list that has prioritization of prioritization metrics for future rehabilitation and reconstruction projects that'll again kind of be the rural basis for our long local option sales tax projects list update. In addition to that, the 2024 to 2028 capital improvement plan, I begun working on updating the project sheets. So it really kind of starts out with listing again of those projects that we want and a planning level cost estimation of not only construction costs, but input costs as far as our project development and then trying to figure out, to guesstimate what resources are we going to have available in the future as far as financing and laying out that path. And working through the first few years and then we'll begin populating the remaining years. We'll, we'll develop the draft of that plan. And as we've done in past years, because we, we generally don't, do not get a strong turnout, if anything, if anybody, period, at an open house meeting for something like that because it doesn't, it doesn't mean there's going to be a project in somebody's front yard right of way. So what we've done is actually put that into a more of an online public outreach approach. So we would anticipate doing that again and we will have to an open house, giving people, you know, three, four weeks to provide permits opposed to online. We've seen a little bit of feedback on that. Gives people a little bit more flexibility. And then bringing it forward to the county board for reviewing discussion prior to final approval. So that's, that's in the works behind the scenes as well. So if you've got any specific concerns or things like that, please feel free to reach out to me. And last but not least, as I think I touched on before, county board, Public Works road tour is scheduled for November 14th, 2023. So we'll forward to that.
For the snowfalls.
Yeah. You said it.
We're hoping for no snow, but.
With, with 13 being opened up, I'm hoping for warm temperatures to continue with no snow for quite some time. Any questions before I take off?
Nothing. I got a call in County Road 13 by our union people.
By our union people?
No. I, ones out there on Third Avenue.
Oh, yes.
But I don't know. Maybe we can talk about that later.
I got a call about it too. I'm assuming it's the same ones.
Yeah. He asked, he talked to me and I says, have you talked to Ryan yet? He says, well, I was going to.
I appreciate that.
You talked to Ryan.
Best place to start, so.
Yeah. Don't, don't call, don't call your county commissioner first on, on engineering issues because, you know, but we'll talk.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Now we have Blue Earth County Attorney.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thank you. Any questions on the report, just let me know. Things are, are busy and plugging away quite readily so far at the office. I know that it was brought up at the department end meeting. Our truancy numbers have just gone kind of through the roof so far this year. And I know there was an article on the local media today talking about education and how many days the kids are missing and whatnot. Jesse actually came up with the idea to do an article in the communicator. So I think that will be forthcoming at some point in time, but we continue to work with the school districts, all the local school districts to try to keep the kids in school. So, but it is a persistent problem for us and for probation in the school districts. So with that said, any questions, concerns, comments? Otherwise, I'll let you get back to your business and beans are drying.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you for that brief report.
So we have our IT people here. Oh, there she is. You were hiding. I didn't see, I didn't see her down there. I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Well, I wanted to provide a snapshot to all of you of what our year looked like this last year. It goes from August 22 to August 23 were the numbers that I compiled. As you can see on the first slide, we have about 90 terabytes worth of data, which is a pretty substantial amount of data. That equate, you know, that equates to all of the 60 plus servers that we have onsite. And it is all of the data that is housed by the departments, the videos, the everything that we have. So this doesn't include our one, like our OneDrive storage, our cloud storage. So everything that you have open on OneDrive is not back into this number. So that's why I have to say that there's some context there that we need to think about too. With the 90 terabytes worth of data, Forbes says the average cost of data management is 3.5% of revenue. So I know that's a pretty substantial number and we're working on getting some of the duplicative data cleaned up and, and making sure that we're running a streamlined system versus having some overhead of duplication. One of the big numbers on here is our 1.2 million emails that were processed this year. I know that's a big number. Statistically, the average office worker receives around 121 emails a day and sends out about 40. Now that's on average. That's not saying someone like Bob may, may have a substantially larger number coming But of those numbers, we did see about 60,000 of them just in our IT department alone. That's either them sending it to the all IT department or someone individually. So those are just some kind of fun facts in there. An average about 5,000 emails per day. We had 16,400 phone calls that came into the county. And of those calls, IT spent about 150 hours on the phone with an average duration of 2 minutes and 17 seconds. Now, as you know, our ticket, our, our calls can range from two hours to 30 seconds if we just ask you to power cycle in the machine. So there's a difference between what that looks like. And then our tickets, we had about 4,100 tickets that came into our help desk. We have 15, you know, we have. We have 15, you know, we have 15 departments that we support with 14 professionals. So I think that that number, that volume is quite a significant volume of tickets. I do have some comparisons of years previous. In '21, we did 3473. In 2020, we dipped down just a little bit with 2,993. And in 2019, we had a larger number with 3,227. So this year was definitely significantly higher. But we think about all the people that we've brought on board and the more support that we have to provide for them. That's where those numbers really come into play. So projects. IT defines a project by anything that's 30 days and over. A ticket is defined by anything 30 days and under. So just a little breakdown of some of the projects that we had. As you can see, we had a very busy year. We had a total of 122 projects. We completed 76 of them and 46 are in progress. Our biggest projects were the countywide initiatives. And I can get into those details with anyone that has any questions offline, but would like to just kind of keep this at a high-level overview. Our next best buckets of projects were seen in Human Services and in the Sheriff's Department. So I know that back in August, Human Services did bring to you a report of their projects. And our projects are defined a little bit differently with the criteria of that 30 and 30-plus. So just wanted to highlight a couple of the projects that we did this year. Countywide, we did the munis upgrade. We did a huge switch replacement. We did a full computer audit. And I know Commissioner Render, he would ask me a while back about what that number looked like. So I wanted to include that today. We had about 750 assets, PCs and laptops included. And we also managed about 295 iPads and iPhones. That does not include our pole pads. That's just devices handed out to staff. And then we entered, introduced SIM logging into our system to help with our security. Property and Environmental Resources, we had the Ponderosa turnover. That was a big project for us to get up and going. And then we still have IS World with, with tax that we're still in, is, is an ongoing project. Sheriff's Department, OneDrive migration, the CIS hardware upgrade, the jail intercom system, which still is a little bit of a project for us, and the body cams that they implemented. Human Services saw the CLI homeless grant site that we built for them, their OneDrive migration, which was enormous. And records retention project that we worked on for them and then their case work server upgrade, which is kind of their record of system next to SSIS and those types of programs. So I just wanted to go through a little bit of the ticket breakdown with you folks. So kind of a fun fact is we replaced about 184 new computers this last year. So that's about 1.35 per day. So that's a lot of working, you know, of, of computers that were replaced. So Human Services tickets totaled 1,636. And the Sheriff's Department was at 508. Corrections was at 252. County Attorney at 231. And Property and Environmental Resources was 448. So just as a comparison, Human Services has approximately 190 staff. And this averages to eight and a half tickets per user. And the Sheriff's Department has approximately 99 staff. And that approximates to about five tickets per user. So obviously, there's some users that put in a lot more tickets and others that put in no tickets. So it, you know, you have to kind of take that with some, you know, balance in there.
Is some of it just because of the systems that they have to work with?
Correct. Yes. So it could be state system. It could be, it could be anything from, you know, the tax system to our ERP, our financial system. Or it could be that the computer just doesn't turn on and we've got to figure out why. Or their monitors just shut off and, um, I don't know why. But, you know, usually that's a documentation issue. So there, it, or we just need to change their password. So it varies, Commissioner, from what it could be just a simple restart to something very complex in building a report out for finance. So every, every year, I like to do a springing fall check-in with department heads and just make sure we're performing our service delivery as they're expecting it to be. And I'm just in the middle of my fall check-ins and everything is going well so far. So that's good, good news to hear. All right. Final page on IT security and safety. So we do, we do try to bring a lot of awareness to our staff on this. We do have a think before you click campaign that brought in over 4,500 phishing attack emails that were protected against and 9,373 phishing emails that were prevented from even entering our system with the protections that we have in place. So those are, are substantial numbers, but that we're blocking them means that we have things in place to protect ourselves. In a single month, we had over 100,000 connections that were proactively prevented with cloud protection measures. So that's a big number. That means that we're getting hit on a daily basis by anyone and everyone. So it's just something to keep in, in your mind, that it is something that we battle daily and we will continue to battle for the unforeseen future. Yeah. So, you know, just to think about October kicks off Cyber Security Awareness Month. We're having a lot of fun with it so far. We hope that you've enjoyed some of the things that have come out and the treats that you've been able to see. And I think it's got a lot of chatter happening, which is, is good for us. We really like to hear people talking about and being security aware. I'm sure you've heard the familiar headlines with like Minneapolis School, Rochester School, or not a local county, the county in Minnesota that was recently hit. We do a lot of blocking, geofencing, firewall rules to try and prevent those things from happening, but nothing's ever 100%. And we just have to be very proactive in how we, we take a stand against this. So I also wanted to say too, in this past year, I've had the pleasure of working with AMZ on the Cyber Security Task Course. And we put together the Cyber Security 101 Guidebook. So if anybody has a request and would like to see that I have a copy of that, I can surely send it on to you. Does anybody have any questions about what I presented this morning?
I don't have any questions, but I do just have a comment, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the stuff you do for the phishing. I don't check my emails as much as I should, but I just appreciate that we're out there doing that. I don't click on a lot of them, but I don't think I've clicked on something I'm not supposed to at this point.
Sure.
This is a lot of work trying to keep that stuff straight when we all get so many emails. As Commissioners, we get them from all over the place, so it is complicated sometimes. I try to stick to the ones that are internal. Anything external, I take a little more time looking at.
That's good. And they really try to get you with a call to action. That is what they're trying to get you to do is you must act now. You must, you know, look at this now and react to it or call or, you know, email or whatever. And that's where we want people just to slow down.
Our county government, we do all that stuff real slow.
We do have some very.
Pass around here.
It is so important. And in fact, I, I just received one last week. And I, it was, it came from supposedly Ms. O'Connor. But, but I pushed, I, you know, I, all the, all the tricks that you told us. And I pushed things as, that, that's not her email in Gmail.com type thing. And, and so I sent it to the phishing, you know, world that you guys have created. And, and I in turn called her up because I read it. And of course, us knowing each other helps too, because she would never send me an email like that saying, you, you have to, this is an emergency. You have to get back to me, but don't call me. It's like, okay, okay, you're not real. But, but it's so important and you do see the horror stories that come from counties, cities, businesses, school districts, people that have been shut down because of things. So I thank you very much for what you do.
I mean, we saw a lot of numbers this morning. We do a lot of stuff. And I think the unfortunate, or the, the reality of it, it's not a fair fight. You know, the bad guys only have to be right once. We have to be right every time. So appreciate the hard work and the seriousness of it because, like I reported at your annual conference, it wasn't that long ago, our, our cooperative went down. And it's much different doing things all by hand.
Absolutely, absolutely. It, it really puts things into context when you've had a real experience and you can reflect on that and see what it actually does to your business. Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I might just jump in as well and thank Carrie and her staff for all the work that she's done. I mean, cybersecurity, even though it's this month, it's really all year long. She has really brought that to the forefront and the reminders, I think, are important. We all have recent examples of where there's been attempts to break our security. I would also say that Carrie and her folks have done a good job in trying to balance, because we still need to get the work done and using technology in ways that protect the county's systems, but also allow us to accomplish the work that we need to do for the community. So we wanted to bring this report to you in this setting because it's really the first time we've done a comprehensive report like this. And we think it's important for the community and the board to be aware of these things. We'll work maybe to bring some consistency in the reporting between IT and Human Services. And so we'll work on that in the coming months. But just wanted to, again, highlight the fact that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to make sure that our systems remain safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
And we'll jump to administration. Bob?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is a county board minutes for September 26.
Move. Got a motion of second for the board minutes, minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Passes.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
I'll second.
I got a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. And that passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that is authorization to initiate a recruitment for a correctional officer. The backstory on this one is we had some temporary positions that I had authorized under my authority under the employee handbook. We reached the end of the one-year period for that temporary position. The board is considering adding additional correctional officers with the 2024 budget. We have a candidate that's gone through the recruitment process. But we've kind of hit the end of that temporary period. And so we're asking if the board would consider authorizing an additional correctional officer for the rest of this year that would ultimately fill one of those additional positions in 2024, assuming the board continues to support that. And so seeking authorization here today to fill that position.
Call move authorization.
Second. Got a motion of second. Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. And that passes.
Under informational items, we filled a number of positions in the library. Couple of on-call library clerk positions, as well as a part-time library technician. Then we've also filled a correctional officer in the jail. We also had an increase of hours for a part-time 911 telecommunicator to go full-time. And we've also filled another full-time 911 telecommunicator position. And then we've also filled a clerical specialist three position, excuse me, in our Community Corrections Department. And then lastly, we've initiated recruitment to fill a land use planner. This previously had been a senior land use planner, but based on workload kind of reorganization, we'd like to fill it as a lower-level land use planner position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items. All right. Item number nine in your packet is a resolution approving a joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota, the Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension. This is a joint powers agreement that would allow both the sheriff and the county attorney to access information through the BCA's criminal data system. And so this is a renewal of an agreement that's been in place for a number of years. The time period, I believe, is a five-year time period.
I'll move approval.
Yeah, I'll second.
Got a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. And that passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 10 in your packet is a financial status report for September 30. We're three-fourths of the way through our budget year. You'll see our total revenues sit at 75.5 million and our expenses at, are just under 79 million. Some items to call your attention to. Again, the local transportation sales tax continues to perform above our budget. We're seeing strong sales tax collections continuing. And so that money going directly to our transportation system. We, excuse me, we're also seeing strong return on our investments compared to what we've seen in prior years. That's helping despite some other challenges that we're experiencing. Our state and federal revenue hopefully will catch up when the third quarter reports are submitted. And we'll see that number rebound a little bit, although we are tracking well compared to our budget. On the expenditure side, you'll see that we're spending at a little slower pace than last year. And we're only at 66.3% of our budget. So we may remain in a solid position there. Contracts and fees line being the road projects being a large portion of that line. We're continuing to see some of those bills filter in as those projects are continuing or being wrapped up. At the bottom of the page, you'll see the Ponderosa landfill under the enterprise fund. We have total revenues at just under 3.8 million and expenses at 3.1. Continue to see strong performance on the revenue side at the Ponderosa. The second page includes the cash and investment balances. You'll see our total available funds towards the top of the page at 56.5 million against a six-month operating needs of 58.6 million. Towards the bottom, you'll see a line titled Total County Funds. We sit at 122.9 million, so just a little bit larger than this time last year. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on the financial status report.
All right.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
Comes down to Commissioner reports. Uh, Mark, you want to start us off?
I can do that, Mr. Chair. A few things. See, Tuesday, the 26th, after the board meeting had JD 36 with Brown County. And then Wednesday, the 27th, had a ship, uh, health, community leadership meeting. Just do that maybe a couple times a year. And then Thursday, the 28th, to have a partners for housing meeting. And might be where then, of course, life's legislature, the governor, they did pass quite a bit of money for homelessness. of money for homelessness, for shelters and so forth, that, so actually, our partners were getting a good share of those dollars to deal with, with homeless housing. It's actually quite a bit, very remarkable. So, they're going to put that to good use. And then October 3rd, had a county board work session, and then the Mayo Civic Center presentation we went to that day. And then October 4th, department heads, and then I guess this morning, conclusion with our new employees gathering. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, we had a P&amp;Z ditch meeting with some of the county staff, Mr. Path, myself, and Bob. And then we had the JD 36 Brown County meeting. Thursday, the 28th, we had a LaCica County joint meeting to set a hearing date for some improvements we're doing over there, a work session. And then I had my statewide emergency information legislative meeting the other morning. We didn't have any business to do, but all updates on the different issues we're going to be bringing forward to the legislature this year, and then the new employee orientation this morning. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Patty?
After the last board meeting, we went to, I went to Shaq. So, I was in Willmar for a couple of days, and then after the work session, the mayor presentation, department heads, and orientation this morning. That's my report.
All right. Kim?
Pretty much, I took most of my thunder. The PR, JD 36, JD 51 have been mentioned. Work session, department heads, and employee orientation have been mentioned. I attended that. My additions were September 29th, we had an AMC drainage work group stakeholders call. Then on October 2nd, the AMC policy chairs and vice chairs had our call with that, and that completes my report.
All right. And for my report, after our last meeting, I had a Transportation Alliance Legislative Committee meeting. On the 28th, I had a library board meeting. I brought you, I handed you some of the facts from the summer learning program, and they had 87 program opportunities for patrons. A hundred, 1,358 kids signed up for the reading program. I thought, you know, I looked at, at all these, average was 30 tweens and 15 teens attended the respective event. On average, on average, 124 people attended the family events with a petting zoo, was 323 attendees. That's a pretty large amount of people showing up at the library. Mapleton averaged 65 attendees per family program. Lake Crystal attended, averaged 105. And the nine-year-and-plus readers earned 4,390 reading tickets, and they averaged, well, that was 8,780 hours of reading, on an average of 37.2 hours per child. That's a lot of reading, and that's, that's really positive for our library and is positive for the children, you know, before they go to school. On Friday, the 29th, there was a NACO chair and vice chair meeting on Zoom. On the 3rd, we had a work session. I had a NACO monthly membership meeting, and that was the end of my report.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, and that passes. Thank you.
So, the call we were taking, though, is that present? Go.